I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro call please.
Jamie Kendall.
Present.
Darcy McSwain, absent. Paul Junderski.
Present.
Edgar Tidoff.
Present.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Present.
And Lois Tiley.
Present.
Approval adjustments to the agenda. We'll be adding, uh, planning commission meeting minutes. Any new motion?
Make a motion that we accept the agenda as revised.
Support.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Pro. Announcement, public comment?
Are you gonna allow a comment when you discuss the chicken ordinance or is that right now?
Now and after, um...
At the end?
At the end.
Alright, then I'll discuss now. So basically, it's gone before the planning commission, been sent back to the board. Third time I brought this before the council, actually twice, Mr. Hollum brought it the second time. Uh, two thousand eleven sixteen and now in twenty-three. Every time I have, that we brought it, I've given every pamphlet, every bit of information that I possibly can. I don't know if anybody's read it. Planning commission, it looked like half the people read it and want to discuss it, but they were arguing amongst themselves on some of these things. I have provided links for the CDC, USDA, MDARD, USDA, Michigan State University and University of Minnesota. I have links to every communication regarding the safety for salmonella, for avian flu that can possibly be released. I submitted all of these. I actually called the MDARD and, uh, after their last, uh, avian flu release where they linked the backyard chickens just a couple of weeks ago, and asked her for more information and she actually, and I asked, is this free-range chickens? Is this large flocks in a backyard? Because somebody on twenty acres can have a hundred chickens and that's considered backyard chickens. And she responded, I have that in here. She responded that from her knowledge, and she is also the lead veterinarian and all that that does this. She said that this is flocks that are allowed to run free, that are caged up at night. And then I asked her, are these animals, are these birds that are allowed to go underneath margatory bird, bird feeders? Where that's where the avian flu comes from? Ninety-nine percent of it comes from wild birds and she said yes. So, that's all in here. She gave her name, she gave her address. She says if we have any questions whatsoever, please call.
So you're saying, if we keep the birds caged up, the possibility of them having the flu are pretty strong?
I also called and emailed USDA, FDA, uh, Michigan State University, and asked them the questions and they referred me to their links. There has not been one single case, not one single documented case, of a bird, of a, of a flock of chickens that has been one hundred percent caged, that has been affected by avian flu. Not one single. That's in multiple states. These are all free-range. These are all animals that get to roam around, pecking the crap of the birds, you know? Walk around where raccoons walk, eat that grass where they're defecating and they're nose to nose, just like deer with CWD. You know? So, this is safe. I have provided every single possible mitigating, uh, circumstance where the fear of, uh, safety, they released documents and publications on how to mitigate that with washing your hands, changing your clothes, wearing the same boots in the coops. Same thing we do every day when you're dealing with, uh, some, or with, uh, COVID. You wash your hands, you don't breathe on people, you put a mask on. If you have a weak immune system, you don't go near them. You know? It's the same exact thing. What we're talking about is we're talking about chickens that have been in backyards for thousands of years. Thousands of years across the country. The USDA actually has released in two thousand fifteen, they have released a, a publication that said it's on the increase. Thirteen million peoples in two thousand, thirteen million families in two thousand fifteen had backyard chickens. This is private, non-commercial flocks. And they expect it to increase at that time. So right now, we're above thirteen million. And there's not the problems. When you're talking about the millions of birds, everybody's gonna be fear-modered. When you're talking about the millions and millions of birds over the last three years that have been killed and euthanized due to avian flu, they tested less than five hundred thousand birds to kill millions of them. If three birds test positive, they kill the entire warehouse, these entire barns with a hundred thousand in each. They don't test the rest. So ninety-nine percent of those probably did not have avian flu. We're not talking about pit bulls. I could have a pit bull on a thirty-four inch up here. I could have, I could inject it with rabies and people would be less scared of that walking around town than they are of chickens. I just... And what the other thing is, is during the planning commission, they discussed the amount of chickens. And they came up with the amount of, of four. So I called around and I called around to almost thirty municipalities, these are the ones that responded. All across Michigan, that's not counting Wisconsin, Minnesota, Ohio, Indiana, New York, Pennsylvania, that all allow backyard chickens. Almost all of them are six birds or more. Almost every single one. So I asked the question, why the arbitrary number of four? What is it? It's just, all the information is before you. It's been, I've done it a hundred times.
We've got an agenda, I guess we're gonna be talking about it more.
Yeah. So, this is six birds. And when I call them, like Freeland, I called Freeland, which is Tidawassee Township. And she says they cannot limit the amount of birds according to their laws. Bay City Court passed a law, according to the USDA, or, uh, MDARD several years back, that says they are now, uh, they cannot restrict the right to grow and produce your own food. And they don't want to challenge that. So they still stick with, we don't limit the amount. It's, it goes by nuisance, uh, smell, noise and blight. That's, that doesn't matter if you have a tiny little backyard or if you have twenty acres, if you're in Tidawassee Township.
Jim, who's going to take care of that noise and smell and blight?
That's the people that own them, the same as people that own dogs and everything else. We do it the exact same way.
So we have to send the police to their place?
Only if there's a complaint.
Yes, well, there's a complaint, you send the police there.
Yeah.
So if everybody's got chickens...
Do you think everybody's gonna want chickens?
No.
I, I don't, but you know, that's me.
Right. But everybody in here that eats eggs, raise your hand? Out of all the people that eat eggs, how many want to raise chickens? Less than ten percent. My chi, my neighbors love them. They love the eggs, they love my chickens.
Why don't you guys make up there, you have a nice sort of committee that you could go check on these chickens?
What's that?
So why don't you guys?
Who's gonna pay him to do that?
Make up a nice committee and go check on these chickens when we get a...
Well, see, that's the beautiful part of the fee. The twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, hundred dollars, whatever you decide on. That pays the ordinance guy, that goes around the checks, Scott. That would pay him and that would cover his wages for every other dog ordinance violation, for every blight ordinance violation. That would cover one hundred percent of everybody and we're more than glad to pay that. We're more than glad to contribute our fee for everybody else to have what they want for free, without a fee. And that would cover that. But putting up a stop sign, if we're gonna go by that, and that's what the mitigating, that's what I'm talking about, mitigating the negatives. The fact is, if we put up a stop sign, you don't say, well, if we put up another one, then somebody's gonna run it. Who's gonna check on that? If we made the speed limit thirty-five to twenty-five, somebody's gonna go thirty-five.
It'd be a little bit different things we're talking about here.
No, we're talking about mitigating circumstances and making excuses, something into bigger than what it is. And that's the other thing I wrote. What comes up every single time, every single time is, what if somebody asks for a horse? What if they ask for a horse? What if they ask for pigs? What if they ask for, to turn the Sunshine Food Store, import Thai girls and turn it into a whorehouse? What do you say? What do you say as a council? You say no. Say no, we don't want to do that. It's not, it's not that big a deal. What if I want to have drats in my backyard? No. You know, if you, we're human beings and laws are created by humans. You can say no. You can vote no on this. That's perfectly fine. I just want you to make informed decisions, not on fear. Not on the fear of grandma's chickens that were running around, fifty of them in the backyard, and the dogs were killing them. That's, that's just irrational because that's not what we're asking for. And that's not what people are doing across this country. That isn't at all. This is asking for six chickens in a six-by-ten coop. The, the planning commission decided on a six-by-ten sized coop. Do we know why? It's an arbitrary number. USDA, MDARD, Michigan State University, all these professionals say one square foot per bird. That means I can have twenty birds in that same size. We're not asking for twenty. What if we give them three square feet? That means I can have ten. Why are we putting a size on that and not a size on a dog kennel? You already have rules in place. You're overthinking this. You have green space that you have to have sixty percent of your yard open, right? To green space. Is it forty or sixty?
Mine's forty.
Forty.
I think we should continue this when it comes to that on the agenda.
So, that would be covered already. One hundred percent. If I wanted to have a seventy-by-two-hundred-foot dog kennel, if I don't have the room, I don't have the room. If I want to have a thirty-by-forty chicken coop and no other structures and it fits, who cares? I only have six birds. You know? It's just, we're overthinking this and we're so afraid of it. It's, it's the most contentious thing that's ever come before the council. And it's chickens.
I don't think anybody's afraid of it. I think it's just... Like, how are you gonna stop it? I mean, looks like she's saying, you know, if you do have a problem, you got a permit, how are you gonna stop it? You can't even stop some of the people violating the ordinances now.
You're right.
So how are you gonna stop it? You gonna go and get the chicken cop in there to arrest them?
Nope.
Fuck.
But...
You gotta stop it, you gotta stop it now.
Can we hold up? Can we hold up? We haven't even made a decision yet. I don't know what, what we're arguing about. Debating, it's, it's down here in the agenda, we'll, we'll get back to it. So, let's, uh... Anybody else got any public comment?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPhail. Spicer Engineer Report.
Good evening, believe, um, everyone got a copy of the report? Any questions before we go through it quick? It should be pretty, pretty brief. I know...
Regardless of that.
I did. Yeah, I'll talk to you after. We met with Don on the drinking water asset management grant. We went through some of the lead cap reporting. We had to provide city Saginaw. Continuing to plug away at the interior verification to meet the PSMI requirements for the grant. Continue that through phase one as we, as we get going. Phase one, um, pre-construction meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at eleven o'clock. We also have a meeting with bond council at nine o'clock. So, hopefully next meeting, we will be able to provide you a, a tentative schedule of construction and give you a little bit more information on that. I think right now, tentatively, you can hear correctly from around, bond sales April twenty-seventh. And then we are going to hopefully officially award the project, air construction at the May meeting and with the start of construction right after. We wrapped up the mission unit pump station projects. Client electric finished those up. We did start up and had a small issue with one of the screens, which was resolved. And I, in discussion with Don, those are up and running, no issues. That came in under what we anticipated as far as the budget goes. We provided comments back to the school on the Safe Routs project we're working on. Have not received any correspondence back from them, so when we get that, we'll keep plugging away at it. And I believe that should wrap it up. Like I said, the big, big one on the phase one project is, um, the pre-construction meeting, which we'll receive, uh, like I said, a schedule from the contractor and, and proceed from there.
This both, here shows two, two projects, one on the eighth, three eight, and then three twenty-seven. They're both phase one. Water system. Wouldn't you, can you explain us exactly what's being done? You know, one is ten thousand dollars, one is fifty-five hundred dollars, basically.
So, ten thousand dollars was the remainder, I'm presuming, I don't, I can pull it up and look at it, get an email response back to hear, but that was for bidding and wrapping up final design. And I am presuming the fifty-five hundred dollar one was the most recent one, which we've been meeting and reviewing shop runs and coordinating with, um, Don Ahmed Heart and the contractor on supply. And we even had a meeting with suppliers to see, um, like, for example, uh, we're running the day shoes right now with curb stops and the availability of the curb stops. So, but, if, if I remember correctly, I have...
I thought we had this ironed out with, with, uh, with Amanda. Oh, competitive bid is still showing, this phase one. I thought we had already gave it to air construction, right?
That's for the bond council? So who's gonna pick up the bond? Not the construction side, bond side, money side.
But that's why we approved it, you're saying three point six to four point one million dollars, right?
That's...
Is that what we approved?
Yeah, that's for bond, to see who's gonna pay for it. Should, the county's approving it, the village is approving it, someone's gotta pick it up. And we'll owe them for the next twenty years, presumably.
So how much of it is being picked up out of that three point?
Three point six. But with interest and principles, probably be about five point seven. So construction side will be three, three point six to four point one. Interest and principal will be about five point seven.
So what does Killie have to do with this?
I, uh, he submitted a congressional house appropriation for seventy-five percent of the project.
So he's gonna pitch in the seventy, state's gonna pitch in seventy-five percent of that?
The federal government, perhaps, we'll, we'll know in December.
So then, we already approved the three point six, will we get a kickback to maybe do more water lines somewhere else?
We'd probably pay off our bond.
Get what I'm going, going, blood, there are...
If we can pay off our bonds, if we pay off our bonds, sooner we can start phase two. So the, the amount submitted by, uh, Congressman Killie is about three point oh-five-seven million, uh, submitted on Monday. It's one of six projects he picked. Uh, he's met with all his new constituents and we were one of the six projects. I, I talked with the manager in Thomas Township, Richland Township, uh, he met with everybody and they all gave him plans and ideas and, uh, even after ours, Central Michigan, Midland, I don't remember all of them.
It says the House Appropriations Committee on Monday, April tenth, that was a couple of days ago. Will cover seventy-five percent, the three point six and the four point one. Five hundred eighty worth of new roads. And two hundred fifty thousand grant from Michigan Department of Transportation, yeah, I'm done. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So he, tomorrow was our due diligence meeting with, uh, bond council lawyers, uh, from Dickinson Wright, Saginaw County Controller, Robert Bellman. They're gonna go through the county's audit and our audit to make sure the money's theirs. Uh, there's stipulations in place, should we go bankrupt, insolvent, can't make our, you know, there's ramifications if we can't make our payments. So we're gonna go over all the financials tomorrow at ten.
What time is it?
Ten AM.
Ten.
And then eleven, we're having a pre-con meeting with Eric, hopefully.
Council minutes approval for March eighth, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion, any changes? Not gonna get a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda of March eighth, two thousand point three.
Support.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Commission and committee reports. Parks and Rec Committee for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion, we accept the Parks and Recreation Committee minutes for Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Support. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Communications. Review magazine.
Part B.
Back that up. Planning Commission. March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of the planning commission for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And now we'll go on to that review magazine.
Publication. Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the file.
I support.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Clean the parks.
Can we include some stuff that's gone on in our park in this, or is this just...
It's county parks.
Okay. So it would...
So, we don't have a county park.
Do you think like Greenwood or something?
Well, I know Remo is, but...
They never have anything for us, for us.
Parks, well, I thought before everything got handed out, I know we didn't have the biggest turnout for the, for chickens we usually do, but...
Thought it was pretty good?
I thought it was okay, but a little bit I see.
I think it was better than last year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I think we changed the time a little later, maybe next year, uh, Easter's gonna be a little earlier, end of March, I think. So we can kinda have time to play with. It's gonna be colder. But I think probably the reason we had more people last year is, we were a week before Chesneen, Franco, Thomas, all the competition we had on Saturday.
So what is that shit we do at the end of March that are gonna be before them?
I'm gonna make sure we're not at the same time, if we had more people.
It's gonna be hard to plan it if you don't...
Bring your snowsuit.
Yeah.
Still doing the parks thing with, uh, Chesneen coming into our parks for...
They haven't called back. Um, he said he'd let me know this month. So, um, the St. Charles Van Matt Wiki has, uh, requested the large pavilion on that same day, that weekend, that Sunday, for a jazz band concert, so we gave it to him. Take care of the locals first.
Read. Use the park if we can.
They get free music if they, if they do come.
I make a motion, we file the clean of parks.
Support.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Payment of claims.
I have a question.
On what page are you?
Uh, page three. The curb box.
Curb stops?
Supplies for the water department, that's your valve in your front yard.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I see we're up another twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, twenty cents over the last month. Two hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifteen cents.
I'm more for this month, don't you, Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
And the DDA, their, um, the planners came, we paid for the planners out of the DDA funds. That was a, a big purchase that we don't typically have.
That's what I was wondering about the curb box. Is that what that is, or is it the...
Yep.
Okay.
We have the fourteen, uh, the fourteen dyke cuts from last year, we just got the bill for that, so...
Because we had the leak over on Jay, so we had the vac truck out there helping the guys, the, suck up the extra water, um...
We should just get our own machine, probably.
It's that Kawiak City Sewer came in, sucked up the water. So they helped them out. That was another thing that we don't typically have.
I think Spicer kind of have, may have to explain what was going on with the nine thousand and the five thousand dollar deal. I mean, this whole plan of retirement, you're talking another twenty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-one.
So that's, that's our MERS, that's pensions, uh, and OPEB.
That was the, um, surplus policy that you guys adopted, so anything that's left over extra in the general fund, then we put fifty percent into our fund balance, so in our savings account. And then twenty-five percent goes to our OPEB, the post-employment benefits. Twenty-five percent of that goes in there and then our pension surplus. So that was, you guys had adopted that, was it February? I think it was in February. So that was that extra payment into MERS plus our, um, monthly pension payment.
Pension surplus fund, MERS.
So when, I believe it was in seventeen or eighteen, they, they created a surplus fund because we were unfunded, um, and the state required us to create a plan. And that was part of the plan is a separate division that can grow its interest on its own while still paying down our, our debts, uh, or making our monthly payments. That's the reason that we've caught up. I was just reading that, in that same paper, you look at Chesneen, they're not even the forty percent funded, they're paying twenty-six thousand dollars a year. But now the state's coming in and trying to bail out anybody below sixty percent. Um, I think in the article it said if they make this payment in ten years, they'll be sixty percent. It's just, we, we did the right thing and here we are, we should find out next month where we're at, eighty percent, hopefully. But it's just, the stakes, we need the right thing and somebody else gets the, you know, the bailout from the government.
Yep.
Originally in that legislation, there was about two hundred and fifty to three hundred million for municipalities above sixty percent funded and they cut it out at the last minute. But they, they said, well, we'll look at it again in the future, so put your name on this email list if you want to know about it.
Just the government, we don't want to help them, so...
Exactly.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills for the month of March. The amount of one hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and eight cents.
That's good.
I wasn't gonna talk about that, anyway. The new pro containers, is that the containers that were uptown?
New pros in favor?
We just said, aye.
Those opposed?
The, those are the, those are the plants that are gonna come up, um, from the...
Kelly Corford and John, is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Perfect Property Care, twenty-eight hundred dollars.
That's the dyke cuts.
What's the dyke cut?
So every year they, they mold the dikes, like fourteen times.
R and B Satauski Center City Sewer Cleaner?
That's the...
Eight bag?
Yep.
Good.
New business, revised fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget amendment resolution twenty-three dash eight.
So although we approve our budget and, you know... So although we approve our budget in, you know, mid-March at our meeting, the bill's still coming after the fact, uh, money still comes in after the fact, whether it's water or sewer, but, you know, there's a statement due, so we get money after we've already approved and ended last year's budget while starting the, the next one on April one, so these are basically solidifying the funds, but they're all accurate for our auditors, um, after we've approved our budget.
You could step back here, somebody was asking me, I know you explained it to me, but maybe you can explain because you're here in the crowd, why we pay taxes just want to crack township? We pay them here, we pay them there, they don't pay anything to help us out, can you explain why we do that? We pay two taxes.
So based on where you live, you pay a village tax and you pay a township tax, so.
How does that, how does that benefit us? You explained it to me before, I can't.
We receive money from people that live outside the village, and sometimes those houses have large property taxes and bring in a lot of money to the village.
How does that, how do, how do we benefit from it, I'm saying, do, do we get money from them? Or is it a, is it a population thing, do we get money from the state for the more?
We receive property taxes from people outside of our jurisdiction, you know, set up decades and decades and decades ago.
So they're just wondering why we're paying to them?
Cause you probably live there.
They live here in the village, so.
You, you also live in township.
It's really, it's, it's, it's an odd thing set up years ago, and I, I asked the person who helped set it up, uh, he's still alive, actually, um, and he said it was a benefit because we didn't have enough, residents at the time to grow the village and make the money, we wanted to do all the things we wanted to do, so as a way to recoup funds from people moving outside the village and building huge homes.
Well, Don might even know, cause like Brant was just bringing this up, where they don't have enough population and enough money to do nothing, is that kinda why we merged with?
Essentially.
Well, the, the village is in three different, in this, three different townships, even though we're one village, some of it's in St. Charles Township, some, some of it's in Brant, some of it's in Swan Creek Township.
And there have, you know, people have asked, is, is it easy to split and try to go on your own, well, if you just have one township, it is, but when you have three, it'd be very convoluted and kinda messy, all, all three having their own lawyers on top of our lawyers and arguing about who gets what.
The, the township care, all the assessing, we pay for the assessor, we pay for the election.
Election, yeah.
So you, you do get every service the township gets, and then in addition, how do you get village services that they do not get?
They were asking, and you must have been part of the conversation, your name was brought up about grading the roads, like Oakley Road, into Schroder, well, that wasn't getting graded.
It's getting graded, it's just.
Not very often, though, they're saying, they were gonna do it themselves.
It's, it's a spring issue, I mean, it's a.
They're saying, your name was brought up and that was, that was.
No, that's township meeting, we don't wanna talk about it, I'm sure we're gonna upset some genie, does this ever report? Make a motion to approve.
Yes, I make a motion for the res, resolution number twenty-three dash eight, to amend the budget.
I support.
It's a roll call.
Also roll call.
Jamie Kendall?
Yes.
Darcy McSween is absent, Paul Jenderski?
Yes.
Edgar Tidoff?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Upstaying.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Lois Tyree.
Yes.
Zoning ordinance.
This is Jason Ball from Row Engineering here, uh, this is, uh, actually, the kickoff meeting was April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, maybe, um, to start all of this. This is year three, year two of zoning ordinance, I don't know if you guys wanna break it down half with questions you have on what we have, um, just a reminder, this is different than code ordinances, this is just the zoning side. And Jason's here to answer any questions you have or try to clear up, uh, any confusion, I know that the planning commission did have some requests as far as side lots, uh, and what is considered a backyard, um, things of that nature, so.
Nice to meet you all tonight, uh, like Hart said, we've been at this for a while, um, in the middle of that process, the planning commission took from about last June through last Oc, October, and went back through all the draft information that had been developed, chapter by chapter, and literally line by line to be sure they were good for it, so your, your planning commission deserves a lot of kudos. The average planning commission does not put that kinda time and effort into reviewing the zoning ordinance update. So obviously, it's a lot, um, but for the most part, the planning commission's effort on this was not to change things, it was to provide consistency, um, make the ordinance more user-friendly for applicants, but also for staff, and then to clean up a lot of inconsistencies that were in the old ordinance and confusion. So I, I feel like we did that, certainly happy to answer any questions or concerns you have, as the village council, you can change this any way you want, the public hearing was held at the planning commission, they sent those comments on to you, so at this point in time, it's up to you to take final action, make amendments, or do whatever you, you wish with the draft ordinance.
Not all of us have eight hours a day to go over ordinances and stuff, so yeah, it's gonna take a while, I'm sure there'll be something going.
Okay.
Yeah, honestly, how many people have actually, other than the planning commission, have actually read the whole thing, the new one, you want, everybody want to do the whole new ordinance book? I'm getting there.
One of the, one of the changes or concerns with recreational vehicles, again, side lot, I know, example, Mr. Isaac brought forth, on where he can put his boats and whatnot, um, something that.
Is it boats or the just camper trail RVs?
It's a little bit of everything, so we need to clarify, I think we should go with wherever the, even.
So that your old ordinance, it, our definition for recreational vehicles and equipment stayed exactly the same, we didn't change a word in it. The old ordinance required any recreational vehicle or equipment to be parked just like, in store, just like an accessory structure, so like a garage. Your ordinance required garages to meet all, to meet certain setback requirements, so for example, a garage has to be, or accessory building has to be six feet off of a side lot line. The new ordinance allows recreational vehi, vehicles to be able to be three feet up the side lot line. The old ordinance didn't specify how long the recreational vehicle could be parked to be subject to that requirement, so in theory, you could have gotten out of your RV and instantly could have been violating the ordinance. We now allow for a seventy-two hour window to be able to park your camper RV, boat, whatever, um, in your driveway, in your front yard, and then it has to move after seventy-two hours. The old ordinance didn't include any of that kinda clarification.
We received a lot of complaints around fourth of July time when people's relatives come up, and we don't mind you staying, parking the garage, but then neighbors get restless after about a week, and the fireworks are still going off after the date, but, um, so that was kinda the clarification on the seventy-two hours. Uh, what we found is kinda easiest, if you have your ordinance with you, we just go page by page, one dash one, if you have any questions, we'll mark it down, we'll discuss it, uh, we'll make notes, and then you can clarify it or amend, if that works for you.
Just to be clear, it's not boats, it's just RVs and campers and?
Recreational vehicle equipment.
Okay, you're saying, you're saying equipment, is that's kinda vague?
Boats, campers, RVs, wave runners, anything that's a recreational vehicle.
So even a powerboat?
Correct, can be parked in the driveway for seventy-two hours, but after that.
We were just told no on that, a couple weeks or a couple months ago.
I did, we read the ordinance, we read the definition out loud to everybody.
Well, we were told no, they said, no, we're not going after boats, and now you're saying yes, yep.
We, we read the ordinance to everybody.
You just got through, what did you just get through, tell me, any, any ORB, any boat, any wave runners, any boats, didn't you just say that?
I, I did not, I can read it to you again if you like, again, we didn't change the definition at all between the last ordinance and. So if you take your draft, there, you put the page two dash ten, definition for recreational vehicle is what our H there. The vehicular portable structure without permanent foundation that can be towed, hauled, or driven. May be used for temporary living accommodations for recreational camping and travel use, vehicles included but not limited to campers, travel trailers, truck campers, or motorhomes. Other vehicles slash equipment also included in this definitions are trailers of any kind, personal watercraft, off-road vehicles, snowmobiles, and similar vehicles slash equipment that may propel a person or is used to transport such vehicles. All described vehicles and or equipment must have a valid and current license issued by a state and prominent display to be considered licensed.
It just said watercraft, maybe I'm missing something there.
Personal watercraft?
Yeah. It's a boat, right?
Yes.
So it can't be in front of a house?
It can for seventy-two hours, and then you have to move it.
Today, in your ordinance.
That's not what you guys said the last time.
It, I, I'm sorry, but, but it is, and.
Telling you, you didn't say, you said you're not going after boats, back Neil Woodgate would write back, you're an asset, exact question, you said, no, we're not, and now you're saying, that's yours.
I did, and I corrected myself, and read the ordinance, I sat right there.
Ordinance or not, I know what you said.
Regardless, this change today, this isn't a change, right now, you can't have a boat sit in your driveway, period, from the front of it, technically according to your current zoning ordinance. So this change allows you to have it sit for seventy-two hours, and the requirement is that it's out of your front yard, be it the side yard, be also not allowed to be just three feet from the side yard lot line instead of six.
So would that like be from the front side line of your house, is that what you're saying?
Correct, so the front yard is in the front of your house to the street.
And only, you're only talking that and then the driveway?
Correct.
After that, it's part further back than that and meets all the other requirements, there's no issue.
Correct.
We're definitely gonna hear some kickback out of that one, I guarantee they're gonna be here to the planning commission, because I know you guys said, I was here when they did it, and you said you're pretty much just going after RVs and campers, and now you're reneging on what you said. We're gonna have to change it then, we're gonna have to bring it up, it's gonna have to be changed, I believe.
It's included, not targeting, well, it's included, well, it's, it's in there, so.
It is, and you take the wording out or whatever, you think, now, now you violate, or someone's gonna get nitpicky and they're gonna. It's recreational vehicle.
For the, for, for your benefit, they're violating the ordinance today as well, if that's the case. We didn't change that definition, if you look back at your current ordinance, it's exactly the same, the planning commission, um, had a significant discussion about this, and we purposely changed the ordinance to be more flexible, not more rigid. So we had a good long conversation about this, and they came up with those standards to be sure that it made some sense for the village. So this, so if this passage, we're remaining RVs, campers, boats, whatever, if it's not, and we move it to your side yard background, it has to still be inside of a structure, correct?
Three feet off the property, you just said.
As long as it's three feet off the property line.
Correct.
And today, it has to be six feet off the property line, also not in the front yard. So any of those issues you're talking about today could be ticketed now, there's no, the only change here is that we're allowing the seventy-two hour grace period, that doesn't exist currently.
And how, who's in favor of that, Scott?
Correct. And he isn't here for the.
They brought up the planning, but I think they bring people back up and this needs to be reworded.
You can change the wording.
We need to change the wording, something needs to happen, because you were here, I was here, I know a lot of these people were here, and we know what we were told, and that's why they were here, they're ticked off because of it.
I was here too, he didn't say it.
Have side lots, what's up?
I was here and he didn't say that, I was on the.
They were all here, and they all asked the specific question, what about boats, we're not going after boats is exactly what they said, I was here.
Why are you attacking him, he's just.
I'm not, he, he just, he's reneging on what they were saying at the meeting, so.
Lower your voice a little bit.
Yes, yeah.
Hey, order, order.
Bring it up af, after.
Enough!
So I mean, as the commission, y'all can take times on it from those page by page, be honest, if you want, um, in my professional opinion, that's a huge waste of your time and effort, everybody's here, here, that's what you have a planning commission for, um, that's their job, is to draft these ordinances and give them to you. Not to say that you shouldn't read them and review them, you should, but in a public meeting, you review every single page of this document, and you're talking about twelve to sixteen to twenty hours probably of time going through this. I guess you can pay us one hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour to do it if you want, um, but I, I don't think that's a good use of your time or frankly ours. I'm happy to talk through other issues and kinda highlight major changes, again, there aren't that many, most of this was just about cleaning up what was there, getting it consistent, there were a lot of references and kinda confusing tables that we got rid of, um, and tried to provide clarity, so if you wanna come in and know, you know, where you can put a, a daycare, for example, or childcare, that can clear up those regulations and also be sure they're consistent with current state law. You just ran into an issue where your current kind of home daycare regulations are actually out of line with state law, and it creates some potential vulnerabilities for the village, so you get those things fixed, not only are you consistent with state law, but you're also frankly allowing for more flexibility and more uses that the world needs, right, the world needs daycare right now.
I don't need to, Dan, you might believe we were even sitting here going over that, when we had several people under that night, so. We need to do something, they've been reworded or whatever, cause that's pretty big.
You wanna start with one dash one? Any questions on one dash one miscellaneous provisions? We did a lot of clarification here just on little things as such as ordinance versus chapter and titles. One dash two. Two dash one. Two dash two. Two dash three. Two dash four. Two dash five. Two dash six.
I have a question.
Okay.
On D.
Two dash five.
Yes, I'm sorry, two six.
Okay.
The domesticated animal. So if we were to accept the chicken ordinance, is that gonna be a domesticated animal or a farm animal?
It's a chicken permit rather than, it's not in the ordinance.
Can I, can I answer that for you, so this is your zoning ordinance, zoning ordinances deal with the use of land only, you have a whole other set of ordinances that deal with your police powers, right, so your traffic safety ordinances, light, and all those kinds of things. Like we said, I understood the planning commission proposed chicken ordinance was living there, not in zoning.
Okay.
So, and that's good frankly, because you aren't necessarily regulating chickens, I think differently based on where they're located in the village, which is what zoning is all about. So in this case, you're just regulating chickens as chickens, period, um, and then you're providing a licensing requirement and some other things, I think, in theory of that, that ordinance.
Oh, good.
Good question. Good question.
Two dash seven. Two dash eight. Two dash nine. Two dash ten.
That's where we're discussing recreational vehicles.
I made a note in, uh, part H, letter H, that the definition should be discussed as far as personal watercraft. And you'd like to see that elsewhere, or omit it from this definition, this is just the definition, you wanna separate?
I think we just need to review it and see what public comment is, because.
There was no, I mean.
We're not, we're not, like we said, we're not influenced, sagging on Detroit, we're a rural community, and for that to be on there is ridiculous. Everybody's gotta vote, every duck comes to whatever, they got kayaks.
Now, we're just gonna.
I ain't got votes, well.
It doesn't have to go back to the planning commission, this is something you can change yourselves. You can amend any or little of this as you like.
And that's what we would be doing tonight.
You can do it right now.
And then we'll discuss it later, I mean.
Well, if we're gonna discuss it later, then we can't.
I can't hear you.
If we're gonna discuss this later, then we can't.
It doesn't sound like we're approving it tonight, so we can go back next, I mean, I'd like to get through, us opening this half.
Go back to the planning commission, talk to them.
It's not theirs anymore, it's yours.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we know what we said the last time we were here, what they believe so or not, we know what we said.
If you wanna review it, we can have a meeting, we can review it.
Let's, let's do that.
Correct?
Yeah, so we could go through half of this now, make notes on what we wanna review next month, go back to it, and continue on.
Can we have an extra, another meeting, so that those out here in the audience that don't wanna sit through this, don't have to do that?
Unfortunately, this is part of the work.
I know, I mean, I know we have to have.
It sucks, I get it, that's why the planning commission spent two years on it. Every night, six to nine, every Thursday, the third Thursday in a month, it's, Adrian, you can attest that this is a lot of work?
Yes, sir.
I'm just, you know.
It's not the glamour, that's for sure, not to feel good, but, uh, our old ordinances were breaking state law, weren't clar- clarified. Uh, convoluted, they're all over the place, check. Chapter three, chapter nine, chapter twelve, now they're all in one spot, it's a lot of work.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I guess I would offer, if it helps for you all, if there's a subcommittee or somebody that wanted to meet at a time that's not eight o'clock at night, to go through this and ask questions, I'd be more than happy to drive out at any time during the day to sit with you and go through it. We can take notes and provide that report back to those groups, you don't have to go through this page by page.
Might be better.
Sure we can.
I just, I don't know about how those out there feel, but, I mean, and, you know, of course, anyone's welcome to attend too, but, I don't know.
We literally held a public hearing, posted fifteen days' advance notice in the local paper.
That would have to be a public meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct, I mean, you could, it would be a workshop session, right? You're not gonna make any decisions there, but it's open to the public, you can post it, notice it, do all those things. Um, but you have the opportunity to go through this and ask questions, that's not, you know, in the middle of your normal village council meeting.
Well, it might give some of us more time to go through it, too.
Sure.
What do you think, Carl?
It's your call.
What do you guys think?
What's wrong?
Talking about maybe have.
Do you wanna just table this for a month?
Yeah, I think we need to just take a step back and look at it, don't just, just get hasty and judge it right now, I think we need to talk to some of the people who are supposed to be representing, and see what they think, I mean, I think most of them are gonna say, the boat thing should not be in there.
Personally, I.
More than half the town will tell you the same thing, so.
I said, and, uh, when they were going over it.
Who's got anything against boating, I mean, yeah, a lot of people don't have really big lots, they don't have three, four acres, they got little lots, like Neil's one of them. Doesn't really have a backyard, so, what's he gonna do? You're gonna have to get rid of his boat or pay to store it. A lot of, some of these people are living paycheck to paycheck, so, I mean.
Okay, but if you remove boats from it, then how's that fair to me? How am I gonna keep it on the boat?
What do you mean, where's that, how's that fair to you? If you wanna get one, you can still, still park it in the back of your house or on the side, or if you got a boat, you can, you can park it out front. If you wanna go boating, recreation, take your kids out, do something, you get a boat, you don't have to worry about, you don't have to worry about parking it in the background or the side when you don't have room or to store it.
I think it's more of a compare, comparison, like, okay, you got a boat hooked up to a trailer, he's got a trailer hooked up, how is it fair?
Oh, I see what you're saying, I guess I did.
Is that kind of what you're saying?
So if you can do it for one.
Right, that's, that's why it's better to cover the cost. Boat with a trailer, it's a recreational vehicle.
Right.
I see RV is way bigger, more cumbersome, blocks of view, or if you got like a little.
I don't know, I've seen some very large boats.
I'm just saying, put them all in the back then, but you, you deal with the public on it, because I'm not for this crap. The boat thing, you guys, you can put it on your head, because I know what they said in here, and the people were in here, if you wanna argue with them, fine, come to the planning commission.
This is a reminder, this is not, you know, set in stone forever, right? So whenever you decide to approve and adopt this, planning commission can always, or you as a village council can all admit, always initiate amendments. So you can make a motion at any point in time and say, hey, planning commission, we want you to hold a public hearing on initiate, on amending X, Y, Z section, because we don't like this. Planning commission holds the hearing, sends you a recommendation, and you all can take whatever action you want, you can be consistent with that recommendation or not.
So then, just to re- re- review, this is our current, this is the current definition, that's been in place since twenty seventeen.
Since whenever your previous ordinance was established, correct? That, that definition did not change in the revisions that we have done over the last two years.
I guess if you had a big enough boat, it would be no different than having a camper, it's gonna obstruct the view of your neighbors and whatever, I get it, but I'm just saying, most of us just got little duck boats and small fishing boats that we tool up down the rivers, whatever, take our family fishing, take out more.
Well, one, one way to, to kind of mitigate this.
Size of the boat.
There, there you go. Twenty, twenty feet and smaller, or twenty to twenty-seven?
The only, I, I would ask, is that you guys drive around the village. That is.
I mean, in, in maritime law, they're different, you know, they're, you come up to this buoy, if you're over twenty-seven, this is where you stop, if you're, you know, smaller boat, you can keep going up to the next buoy, I mean.
Right, we're not talking about.
There already was, but, I can, Scott pulls out his tape measure.
This one's twenty-six and a half, he's good.
Here you go.
We're gonna turn it down.
Slow, slow mo, it's a real.
I have to finish first.
Sorry.
The, the only thing I would ask is, drive around the village, there's a few incidences where, they're not necessarily boats, it's an RV, the tongue is within two foot of the road. You're trying to blow the road, this tongue is right there.
Yep.
It's blocking the neighbors, I'm not saying everybody, but just drive around and look, something like that, I think, should be addressed. I mean, the tongue is literally a foot off the road, it's been parked there for years, and it's tired by it.
My personal opinion is, I don't have a problem with anyone parking their recreational vehicles in their yard for whatever length of time they want to, as long as it looks presentable when it's there, and it's not blocking the road, or it's not, you come up to a stop sign and it's not blocking your view. But, that's my.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you that if you got, okay, I got this, um, what do you, what is that thing you have, Marie? That little red thing you have?
Your side by side? Side by side?
Side by side, so I got a side by side, and I got, I say, I got a twenty-foot fishing boat, and I got my, uh, trailer, you know, my camper trailer, and we have, I, I've got a trailer with a couple of quads on it, and I got my skidoo's there. And if I drive by that house and all that stuff is sitting out front, it looks like crap. Why can't you take that trailer and put it back beside the garage? You know?
And it's avoiding crime.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna steal it.
Yeah, it's out here, yes, it's out the front yard, yeah, that's all I'm saying, you know, I don't think that the town needs to be looking.
It's avoiding crime, yeah. Yeah. Right.
Some people might say that looks like a fun, but I'm just saying, I know what you're saying, but some people don't have the room in their backyard or their sidewalk.
Then they're gonna have to store it.
Yeah, well, then they're gonna have to store it, there's a lot of, a lot of money to store it, so.
That's life, that's life. That is, that's life.
You can afford it, then you can afford to store it, that what you're trying to say?
You gotta store, if you can't follow the ordinance, you gotta do what's right, and store it, if you can't store it, I guess you don't have a boat, that's life.
All right.
When, when you buy one, you gotta figure out where to go.
Right.
We'll just make sure that we keep track of the names of the people that are against it.
That's fine.
Come, come boating time?
That's why we.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a recreational vehicle, but it's also enforced by a different ordinance in the code side.
Okay, so if that was your street vehicle and it's street legal, you drive it, and you park it in your driveway every day, what that would be, because I know a lot of people that are doing that now. Same with golf carts, if it's street legal, licensed, has a license plate, is it now not an RV?
An ORV and RV are two different things.
Okay.
An ORV is an ORV, an RV is an RV.
Okay.
Two different things.
I still don't understand what. I understand what, what Jim was asking, but I don't understand the reply to that. I understand they're two different things, yes, but can I park my golf cart in, in my driveway? Or, or, uh, my, um, I, I can take a quad out on the road now, can, can I park that in my driveway for over three days?
Sounds like you can if you move it every seventy-two hours. Set it for more than three days.
So, like I said. Like I offered, and I think like Hart tried to offer too, like, we can give you other options on this, we'd like other options. So what went through the planning commission, was approved, they had a lot of the same conversation, and it ended up with, you know, it's hard to differentiate between the twenty-foot boat and the other thing, and that, in the end, like you said, this, this is where they landed. If you want options, we can give you an alternative, that like Hart said, that it differentiates based on size or type of vehicle, and allows for, I don't know, one or two of those sorts of vehicles that are smaller boats, or ORVs, or, uh, golf carts be parked in the driveway permanently. If you'd like to provide some of that specificity, we can also just not regulate those things at all, we can say recreational vehicles are only things that are bigger than a boat, than a twenty-foot boat, and you can leave the rest to the way you'd like it, you have options, you don't have to regulate any of them.
Well, since this is becoming such an argument, I think it needs to be defined, really, seriously, like you said, size, length, whatever.
Sure, we can give you some different options.
We'll have them for next month. Shall we continue?
Yes, sure.
Run away Fred.
I, I would think one thing to consider too is safety and fire fighting too. You need to have room inside houses to get, I'm sure Jamie can, you gotta have room to get inside a house if it's on fire, if there's a RV parked there, you can't get around it. At least three foot sounds reasonable, at least we have three foot, three foot, you got six foot to get through there, if you got a fire or something like that.
Anything on two dash ten?
We're not tabling this.
We're just gonna go through, we're gonna, he's gonna bring us options next month for letter H, varying definition, definitions based on this conversation.
So y'all don't wanna do the separate meeting and review this, and like, is he gonna go through it tonight?
You guys talk.
I don't think we need to tonight, I'm not prepared for myself, so, no, we'll do it another time.
Table it.
Table.
Don't take a motion to do so.
I make a motion, you table it. Tell whatever.
Do I have a second?
Somebody second it.
Oh, you want a second?
Pardon?
You want a second to move?
Second, good move.
Those in favor? Those opposed?
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, I really appreciate letting me talk about it, just one thing I'd tell you for what it's worth, um, this actually really needs to be, your current plan of ordinance is, is, is not good. Um, and it's creating real, real issues, you have residents that wanna run family daycare centers that can't get licensed by the state right now. So the longer you table this, the longer you continue a bad situation. If there are little things in this that you wanna tweak, you can always change them sixty days from now or ninety days from now, I'm not saying that you have to move forward with this. I'm just offering, there's an element of this that, that you're never gonna get it to be perfect, but better is a good thing. And in my professional opinion, I think from Hart's perspective and the planning commission, this is a whole lot better. Um, so I just ask you, as you're thinking about how to move forward with this, you keep that in mind, that today, you have some folks that are, you have some real challenges in the, in the village, as it relates to community development otherwise, that are created by your current ordinances that this fixes.
My feeling is, is that, my husband's on the planning commission, so I know how much time he's spent, you know, they've spent on this, and I trust them to, not just because my husband's on the planning commission, I mean, I sat in on some too, and I, I trust them to do this, they've spent a lot of time on this.
Yes, and that's.
It's not like they did it like in a month or so, and it's good, and they spend.
Well, that's what they're there for, and so we have confidence in our planning commission.
Why do we have a planning commission if we can't have confidence in them to, to, you know, they're part of this village too, and I think.
Well, if we had another meeting, like you said, maybe, not the next month, this meeting, but a separate meeting just to go over the ordinances, go over them, looking all over, you know, and say, yeah, this looks good now, let's adopt it.
Is that what you wanna do?
I, I think it's a great idea.
I would adopt it as soon as possible, I, I, because I agree exactly what he's saying.
Yeah, me too.
Need to get this, just to clear and get it.
So we're thinking, adopt it tonight, and then we'll go over, make some revisions? If we do that.
I'd like, I'd like to adopt it.
There's a motion in a second, I tabled it, table it, correct?
It's not tabled, it's not tabled, said a motion to.
Yeah.
We already tabled, so. It's tabled.
It's tabled. I, I went through this whole thing in the last week since I've had it in my house, I had no issues. Some of us here have issues, so we sit here and argue about it, or we, we solve it, but we already tabled it, so we're gonna move on.
Hart, convey, do you have to ratify the whole thing, or can you take that ordinance for the child of daycare and get that moving? Approve that and get that one rocking through. Theoretically, can you do that, or does that have to be all or nothing?
Um, no, because the notice you published was to adopt the new ordinance, not to amend that one section.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we're, now, all we're doing is we're begging the state to give them a thirty-day, sixty-day approval or pause while we're trying to get everything in line, because, like you said, we are currently, we're breaking.
Right.
It's only enabling that.
Yep.
So are we tabling this for next month's meeting, or are we gonna do?
Once you table it, a decision must be made in the next month.
If you don't, it's dead.
Yeah. Yeah.
We, we have to do it next month. So we can't have a meeting.
You, you can have, we can have a public meeting, a special meeting to discuss it and go through it.
That, that, what I think we should, I mean, there's so many questions about it.
Without, without action being taken.
Yeah, maybe we oughta do something like that and go through that, get everybody squared away.
No matter what you do, you're not gonna make everybody happy.
Well, you never do. You never do. No, of course not.
I think we just get the general feeling of what's going on and what makes everybody most compliant, honestly.
Right, and that's what this did is got us into compliance with state law while changing very little of what's already on the books. Minimal impact to the village residents was the goal. We don't wanna be your big brother. We're not trying to spot on everybody. You know, as we've stated before, man's home is castle.
And evenings are tough. I will make myself available as much as I can during the day. It's much easier. You'll find a time to meet during the day as a special meeting to go through this. I'll do my best to make myself available to make that happen.
We appreciate it. How far away do you live? That far away? Are you from Lansing or where?
I live in Durant, so I don't count that far. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Start re-deciding.
Ball field, Stone Quest quote.
Uh, we have a, a pretty good working relationship with Little League. And their board at this time, it hasn't always been that way, and Diane Dennis could vouch for that, may she rest in peace. Uh, but they brought forth diamond dust for the field, mostly field one. And there's always discrepancy in what kind of diamond dust they want versus what we provide. They brought us a quote for eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy cents. And we discussed, um, why would we pay for freight and tax when the village is a tax-free entity and we can pick it up ourselves? So in order to be good stewards of our parks, I brought it to the parks committee. They recommended that the village take care of it for two hundred and sixty dollars, seventy cents less than what the Little League would pay. Um, Tyler Brown, who is one of our newer DPW employees, and Scott Diffin, who was back there, if you haven't met Scott yet. Uh, we should introduce him later tonight. Um, but Tyler offered his time Saturday, this Saturday to, to go. Don will go pick it up. Tyler will come in on Saturday and help distribute it so while they're working on the park cleanup, they can fix up the field as well. Uh, Pat Cornford would, said he would do the work, bring his gator and shovel it out and spread it.
Does it really need to be sifted? You really think it's that coarse?
They, they seem to, uh, the Little League seems to. And they said, they discussed, as you recall, that now's the age where they start sliding and they're getting ripped apart.
Does Ray do that? Doesn't Ray have a sifter out there?
I don't know.
I'm sure he'd bounce here and, I don't know.
Uh, yes. So I, we'd like to get this approved tonight, uh, pick it up probably tomorrow and have it delivered on volunteer time this Saturday, if that's okay.
I'm good with it. Get it rolling.
Make a motion on it. That we buy the diamond dust. The Little League ball field at the park.
Support.
Roll call vote.
Kendall?
Yes.
McSweene is absent. Genderski?
Yes.
Tidoff?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Tiny?
Yes.
Proclamation for beautification day.
Uh, beautification day is May nineteenth, uh, coming up. As you recall, we're working on become a tree city USA. In order to go after grants, this is part of that. We passed the resolution last year. Uh, this official proclamation will go towards our application for grants as far as keep Michigan beautiful. Uh, foundation is going after free trees, tree removal, things of that nature, nature. Uh, we got our beautification day up on the art, the state's Arbor Day site. Um, list every Arbor Day event or beautification day event throughout the state. It's something we haven't done before. Uh, also get, makes us more eligible for grants and more noticed, um, from entities that supply funding. Um, as you can see, you know, we put this in Ed's name. Uh, just showing our support. You know, last month they were here talking about the money that they've volunteered over the years. On top of the village, giving them a thousand dollars to ecological, um, classroom to buy the plants. DPW, the one day of DPW work, we did a study in twenty nineteen. It's about thirteen thousand dollars worth of time and equipment from our DPW every year for that one day. That's not on top of the watering, that's not on top of the weeding and the hams that we pay for. So in the same equivalent amount of time, we spent over three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars on beautification day. And so I think it's important to know that we support them, uh, we're willing to work with them and, and keep this going. And I mean, next year is year fifty, am I reading correct? Or is it forty-nine?
I think we're at seventy, so.
Oh, wow.
Two, sure, forty-nine next year.
Two years.
Two years, it'll be fifty.
Yeah, so they said forty-nine in the, in one paper, it's forty-eight on the website or the Facebook page, but uh, the goal is, you know, Doug Howland's big on getting to fifty years, and so we wanna show our support. This is what made we can do it while strengthening our, our grant opportunities. So I, I think we should just, you know, approve this and, and let them know that we, we do care and we are happy to help.
We need to help advertise it, I believe. I mean, this proclamation, we can put this in the citizen.
We can put it in the citizen, we can put it on our Facebook page and also.
Do it all, do it all.
It's not just because it has your name on it, is it?
No.
Except we don't get as much protesting. Like when I was, when I was going to school, it was great having to get out of school.
Yeah.
Go home for a while and just go home.
But, yeah.
But we have ready to pitch it a little bit, you just doesn't seem to have that anymore. The kids aren't helping.
They, they either get out of school, hit their baked pen a couple of times and.
But it's also a different format of what it used to be. It's also less students than it used to be. We have half the number that we used to.
Yeah.
It's not an all-day event.
I think back in the day, the teachers used to do like a roll call to make sure some kids were there helping.
They are there, yeah. They're supervising them.
They need to just leave them there and go right home or stay in.
Oh, no.
Now, see, it's always, it's always open to high school students. Has it ever been discussed about possible middle school students? I mean, it's kinda, it's hard to keep tabs on elementary kids and keep them.
I think they've been doing more around the school.
Depending on the hour, the middle school does do some things, like if it's on an elective hour, they'll go out and they'll actually try to do around the elementary, the middle school or the school grounds area.
They've talked about it at the meetings, the middle schoolers cannot leave the school grounds. Whenever there's, for some reasons, they can only do things around the school. They can't go in. Whatever, I don't know why, but that's what they have.
I don't know, but I feel like what we lack in students, I'm hoping we can get more, get it out there more, get more alumni, more adults involved, business owners. Name it, bartenders, whoever. Let's get everybody out there. It's cleanest town, you know, four hours in one day, a whole town can do a whole lot.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all there. It's all there. Four hours of some grunt labor and she shines nice again, you know.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for beautification day.
House of cards.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Chicken permitting.
So in front of you, you have the Village St. Charles draft permit to keep backyard chickens, a twenty-dollar fee. Expires after three years from the date of issuance. Uh, permits are non-transferable, may not be sold or assigned. It mentions the parameters of the six by ten with the run. Kind of discuss the interpretation and enforcement of the private restriction. There is a, an additional adjacent neighbor consent form that is not necessarily what the planning commission recommended. But this would just be a waiver to change the forty-foot requirement. So it's not necessary if you follow the exact permit to the rule of law, but if you wanna make changes to the forty-foot, this is an option.
Forty foot, what are you saying there?
So basically in the backyard, um, you have to be no closer than ten feet from property line of the adjacent property, nor shall it be located closer than forty feet to any residential structure. So if you wanted it closer than the forty feet, then.
If I wanted it on the property line in the corner, so I don't have to keep mowing or I don't want it in the middle of my yard. I gotta get permission from my neighbor.
Right, so this is if you were to locate it closer than forty feet to any residential. Again, an option that is included.
Ridiculous.
I have a question.
And I think the four, four chicken thing is ridiculous. I think it needs to be at least five or six. You know, it's not even worth having if you don't have at least five or six. I mean, then you have one die and then what do you got?
This is not written in stone yet, Paul.
I know, but I'm just putting this all out there, because I, I sat here and listened to them argue about chickens for an hour and a half, the last planning commission, and I'm just like shaking my head, beating heavy a ball, then this is a way.
Well, that, that's what you get paid for.
And then for the twenty dollars for three years, you can't enforce some of the, the stuff you have going on now, some of the ordinances and stuff, you, you can't, can't.
I, I think four, twenty dollars is enough.
It ain't the twenty dollars. It's, it's the, if you go for three years, and, and let's say I live next to you and you get chickens and they stink so damn bad. I paid twenty dollars for my permit, so I'm gonna do my chicken for three years, no matter what you think, even if it stinks. Now, if you got it for one year, and if you wanna redo your permit, pay an extra five dollars, which, which puts more money in the kitty for the guy to, the chicken chair or whatever you wanna call it.
I don't think twenty dollars is enough anyway.
But then, if you got it for a year, you, you can actually say, well, you know, you weren't being a good neighbor with your chickens. We're gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna renew your permit. So I mean, if I get it for twenty dollars for three years, I got my permit for three years. Now, how are you gonna enforce it? How are you gonna take that away from me if I got it for three years?
The twenty dollars is not enough. Then you got, oh, it's only twenty bucks. Let's, let's build, you can go, you know, buy the permit. Make it a little bit more expensive, so they really gonna have to wanna raise chickens and do it the right way.
Do it the right way, yes.
It wouldn't be worth it for four chickens.
I have a que, I have a question.
Sixty dollars, six chickens?
Twenty dollars a chicken?
If, this has been, this has been brought up
Can I get an eight-piece?
By two other councils and voted on by two other councils, why are we bringing it up again? Because it's been voted down by two other councils. Why are we bringing it up again?
Just because you don't want it, doesn't mean the rest of us don't want it.
It doesn't matter if I want it or not.
You're the minority, the majority of the people I think want this.
It doesn't matter if I want it or not. Two other councils have voted on it and two other councils have voted it down.
I'm not voting it down. I think it's a good thing. I think it's great for the kids. I think it's great for family. I think it's great to have tanks.
The answer to your question is it was petitioned to the planning commission. It was taken up by the planning commission, thus it's brought to you.
Even though it's been voted down twice already.
This is a new council.
Yeah. Say, careful what you, what you vote for.
On, on January, when I was in the governor's office, on January one, we got a hundred calls from convicts trying to get pardoned because there was a new administration. They were voted down by the last administration. That's, that's very common in, in state government, federal government. They send in letters with feces on it, begging for pardon, clemency. It's disgusting. Just a little fun factor.
Thank you.
We actually, Nestle's actually doing that now.
Pardon?
Nestle's actually doing that now. So we're gonna.
Oh, shoot.
I'm just saying, I don't, I like Mr. McPhail's, that under ten percent is gonna do it. It's not gonna be that big a deal. They're making way too big a deal out of this. We just kinda go with the flow. Some comments on here instead of fighting about a couple of chickens. It's ridiculous.
A motion, a second, a roll call.
Okay. But at the same time, you guys need to define what you would like to do here. Obviously, we have some that want to change amounts, some wanna change monetary amounts.
I think three, three years is good either, though. Who's gonna, who's gonna place that for three years for, for the twenty dollar? How are you gonna pull this permit away? You're, you're, he, Crowfoot. He ain't, he ain't doing the ordinances we've got now. You still got over there off.
Well, because look, we don't have any ordinances now.
That's been going on since I've been.
But we're holding on because of ordinance review. That's what we've discussed multiple times, is why we're not doing that, because we need to pass our ordinance.
Until it's adopted.
That's the thing, when are you gonna wait another three years and then, okay, well, I got my three years worth, my twenty dollars worth, so push it through. I've been coming to these for, going on a year. I haven't seen one ordinance enforced.
Can we vote to see if we even won at first before we decide whether we start it, like first and all that?
That's up to you guys.
I think, uh, no, it works. Did it over with.
Yep.
Either yes or no.
Yeah, but I mean.
I'd like, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it be a hundred dollars.
No way.
Maybe they could have six chickens.
No way. That's ridiculous.
Pardon?
They could have six chickens.
A hundred dollars, six chickens?
Who the hell?
A hundred dollars?
Yeah.
No, absolutely not.
If everybody, if you really want chickens.
Chicken and eggs gotta survive for a hundred dollars.
You're not gonna have a mess in your yard because you're serious about it. Neighbors are not gonna complain because you're serious about it.
Just as the planning commission did, you can make forth that, you can vote.
I mean, this is twenty twenty-three. What's a hundred dollars anymore? A hundred dollars is like a nine-dollar bill.
There's no way I would ever even think about voting. And you put stuff up out there, like I said, you make sure you put your name attached there, because elections coming up in a couple of years, so.
And for the last twelve years, Paul.
That's good. Make sure you put your name to it. Most of the people are for it. If you're against it, you need to, if you're against what most of the people want.
Then they don't have to vote for us the next time.
There you go. That's exactly what I'm talking, make sure you attach your name.
You don't like what I have to say, don't vote for me this time.
Yep, yep, that's what you're here for.
So this is recommended by the planning commission, is obviously open for amendments and adaptations.
I'm not accepting it. There's no way. Definitely needs to be amended.
Well, you all know what I think. Does it amend it?
So are we gonna amend it and then vote, or?
Well, that's up to you guys.
If we can all agree on what, what are we amending? Are we amending the bee as well as the pond of chickens?
Well, we split the difference. Most people are saying it's six. They're saying four in this. Why split the difference? We say, please do five.
Fine with six chickens.
Twenty dollars and the permit's good for one year and then five dollars to renew it every year. That way you can say, nope. You, you can place it a little better. You can say, nope, we're not renewing your permit. We're shutting you down. You weren't a good chicken.
I think it's forty dollars a year.
Six chickens, forty dollars a year.
Forty dollars a year, that's ridiculous. It takes all the, that takes the, you could have some kid pay forty dollars a year, that's not fair.
Forty dollars a year.
Thirty-five? What's, what's, what's a good rate for you?
I think we'd already discussed this with twenty dollars. Now you're going forty, hundred dollars?
Yes. That's what we're saying. Just like you're saying twenty, we're saying forty, we're saying hundred.
That's twenty dollars.
Chicken's like ridiculous.
This time I heard twenty dollars tonight.
Why don't we see if it passes that we want chickens before we start talking about others?
And then amend it? I, I.
Beside, the pond shouldn't be signed.
We can just amend it tonight and take a vote tonight.
Yes.
So do you wanna vote to permit chick, allow the permit, permitting of chickens in the village and then work on adapting or adopting?
Rules.
The rules and regulations or?
Well, we, we have a council that we can't agree to a price or amount of chickens right now that we can even make a motion.
That's what I'm saying. Vote, see who wants it, who doesn't, see if you already rules first and then those sense of discussing price and everything else if we're gonna vote it down.
Yeah, if you're gonna vote it down, then why discuss the rest of it?
Okey-dokey. I'm going with anything you wanna go with. Do you want chickens in the village?
Is that what, is that our motion?
I, I make a motion that we allow chickens in the village.
I'll second it. We allow them.
It's a roll call vote, right?
Jamie Kendall?
No.
Darcy McSweene is absent?
Yes.
Etida?
No.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
No.
I should wait to vote on stuff, I guess, when we have, when we have a Darcy here.
Yeah.
Don't you make a difference. Of course, you gotta be a part.
I pass this responsibility on.
He said it, he said it. Wait, because we were in a car, he said that. So we didn't get anywhere.
Are we wasting?
Do we go again?
Tie vote means defeated, according to Robert's rules.
Is that what it means? Defeated then? Is that what it means, defeated then?
Motherfucker crap.
No, it's Robert's rules.
What rules mean that defeat, you couldn't wait, can't wait for Darcy, you're just gonna vote tonight instead of wait for her?
Well, we did.
Well, we did vote tonight, you voted the way you wanted.
We did, we didn't vote.
All right, it's on your, it's on you guys, you guys are the ones that voted no, I voted yes.
I didn't vote no, I voted yes.
The people just remember who voted no.
Department reports.
Hey, all right.
Mr. DPW.
And on the water side, we did have a water leak on Jay and Tyler was nice enough to make us an exhibit of this is why we're doing our water project.
Ah.
That is a typical galvanized line inside the village. And I know we don't see him every day with this this project, that's why we're doing it, it's very important to the village and I know it's costly, but this is gonna make a huge difference for the village of St. Charles. Uh, we did send in all our annual eagle reports, uh, on the sewer end, as Mitch talked about, our mission units are installed in with the Walnut Street and, uh, East Maple, so we have, uh, SCADA equipment on them, we can. It goes to our on-call phone if there's an issue in the middle of the night, we're gonna saddle traffic. We started sweeping streets for the year, um, equipment, we've been getting ready to mow in and we mulched at the park and I would like to introduce Scott Dippin, he's our new employee for the village of St. Charles, DPW, if you. We had him help Scott, he brings over twenty years of, uh, underground and equipment operating and, uh, he is a US Army veteran and welcome aboard, Scott.
Thank you.
Police department report. You have the March report, February report in front of you, uh, we've held interviews, we had three today, three last week, uh, we are gonna deliberate tomorrow and make some phone calls, probably go on to a second round, we had some wonderful candidates with a lot of experience. Um, big on protect and serve and community policing, um.
Just amazed me that you got that many applications.
Yep.
You know, the the amount of people that don't want full income.
Yep, and that was one of the big big questions is what do you what are you gonna do about recruitment, and several of them said, if if I'm hired, staff has already said, I'll come with you, so we could add one to two more based on which person. Um, goes, some are some are as ambitious as a twenty-four hour department.
The younger people that are fresh out of school, or what is this? Just saying here that you interviewed quite a few people, April twelve meeting, Julie Church, blah, 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 three years.
You're not allowed to ask about age legally?
I know, but I'm just saying the younger is all I'm asking.
I would, I without without getting us into a lawsuit, I would say anywhere from forty-five to fifty-one, fifty-two.
I guess my question is, you left Julie under as intern for three years, you never made her police chief, you think that's why she left?
I do not, I asked her quite late.
Not leave.
I asked.
She did leave, she let you step down.
She stepped down, this week she said it was just time.
Did you actually make her police chief, or she just?
According to documentation, on July seventh of twenty twenty, I called her and memo's to staff and to the public and posted on the state website as Chief Church.
What I'm saying.
That's when we came out with our COVID, um, you know, basically response, uh, she was one of the members there and it was Chief Church. I did ask, is it the title? No, is it money? No, is it overtime? No, it's just time.
You didn't actually, she was interim police chief, so she wasn't actually police chief.
She had the police car, she had the the gold badges, the gold everything, the the pals, the pals, the hat, she was called chief, she went to the chief.
Did she have the notoriety, did she have the title of being police chief?
Yes.
Ain't what I was told, but I'm just saying, if you get one of these people in here, they're gonna be full time, you're gonna have her full time.
We have budgeted for this for the last two years.
Miss Ot may be full time is what it's saying in here up in the school?
If the school approves about thirty-four thousand dollars, uh, to pay half of Ot's salary, then we would work on hours and coverage and how we would do that.
I'm just saying, I just don't wanna be getting somebody in here as a police chief and then just stringing him along for another three years where he goes, okay, you're not gonna make me whole, then I'm gonna move on to you, I don't wanna go through this again. Somebody who actually wants to make a career, I mean, then you you talk to some people, let's say you come up with Saginaw and you're making eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year, are you gonna go on here to a little village making a lot less money? Probably not. Gonna come from one of these other big towns, come on here and make less money? Probably not, I'm just saying, how long are they gonna stay here? What was that?
There's a lot less crime, that's why they would come here.
Yeah, I get it, but I'm just saying, a lot of it's money, a lot of it's about the money, not all about that.
We haven't negotiated to know what it starts at, um, most of them said they're looking, one guy today said five to ten years, he was on the older age of the spectrum, uh, he wants to work till sixty-five, he had eighteen years in Detroit, he's done it all, seen it all. Um, I don't know if he'll make it to the final cut, uh, but most people have over eighteen years' experience and, um, since they're, some of them are retirement based on the twenty and out, uh, they do have a pension already, so we could be flexible in benefits on. If you don't take our pension, we can put more towards your salary, it's it's gonna be a little leeway here and there, uh, one gentleman asked about the four fifty-seven, if you recall, last year we, I brought that for for MERS, that's huge to people, that's that's money that, um, our employees can make on top of it, and if you could, it's. The way that they described it today, it's it's a case of beer a month, and it can equate to about three hundred thousand dollars when you get to retirement age.
We got these three, you got actually four, let's say you bring in some of their staff with them, is it gonna push anybody else that's already in here out?
Nope.
The part timers?
Nope, these positions that have been approved, we just had trouble recruiting or, uh, getting applicants, we did have a call today from somebody that wants to come here part-time, um, but we do have the funding to do so.
We're like low budgeted on the police end of it.
We've never been low budget since I've been here, it's increased about, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars in three years.
I heard they're like not allowed overtime being given to them, so.
We don't have a lot of staff either. I mean, it's it's available, there's funds available.
I'm gonna hear that, it's in the budget, yeah.
It's in the budget, it's been budgeted since we got here. There was some confusion versus holiday versus overtime and trying to, you know, they have to decide whether they're working tens, twelves, and and they never did that.
Okay, another thing, I guess I've we've, I passed it up here, and the papers even saying about the grants, well, you never really followed up on the railroad bridge grant that you you got, you you. Get some other grants about the kayak launch and stuff that was in the paper.
Yep, so the grant for your, the the railway, um, they said end of April, first of March, first week of May is when we're supposed to hear about that, um, the body worn cameras for the police, we're supposed to hear end of April, first of May. Uh, kayak launch, we have made some adaptations, the head walls built, parts are here, as soon as the water goes down, we'll get the head wall.
You're gonna need a permit from Eagle to do that?
No, because it's it does, it's not permanent, it's not a permanent structure.
You just put a post out every year.
Correct, that's how I'd get out of that.
There's some people down there, they're they're kind of whining, somebody down there, but, you know, working on the gravel thing.
Yeah.
Get the permits. So, other than that.
Julie Inspector?
Scott is at has a doctor's appointment this evening, he's been having some back problems, um, he had surgery, I believe, ten years ago and it's starting to act up, so he apologized for not being here. He won't be here at the next planning commission meeting because he will be out of town, um, the only thing we have for that is a FEMA flood plain, um, ordinance that's brought forth by the state, we have to have approved by August. So, we posted it today because it has to be public hearing, so I might cancel the May meeting and and do it in June since, uh, we didn't post it in quite enough time and he won't be here to talk to it. He did bring it up at the township meetings last night, I think, uh, Brady or, um, Brent and St. Charles do have to pass the same one. So, it's something that we wanna review and, you know, it'll be great to have Kenny Coots sort of have a chance to talk about flood plain and FEMA.
There you go.
You can talk all you wanna, but you have to participate.
Yeah, you lose funding, you lose opportunities, something bad happens here and we're not, we don't have the ordinance, they're not gonna help us.
Your homeowner might not be able to get flood insurance.
What about enforcing some of these ordinances, where you got with some of that, I mean, that's been what I'm.
So, because we don't have a, we haven't passed this zoning ordinance, um, it's hard to go after them because we don't have.
You know where I'm talking about, where I'm going with this, across Lake Atlantic over there, it has gotten worse.
Yep.
This stuff's getting piled up over there, it gets terrible.
I'm I'm willing to bet in the near future, it'll be very clean.
I think it's a fire hazard.
Right, it's gonna be something.
It's terrible, I mean, as far as the coal guy down North Street, well.
Looks odd on the left.
Ah, if you're going, yeah, okay, west north.
West north.
It'd be on the north side.
Okay, because we got one on east north too, that.
Yeah.
I called, uh, Verta at the land bank, both properties downtown, and there's a house on east north, I was trying to see if they paid, and the land bank is great in theory, it was started in Genesee County by, uh, Dan Kelde, Congressman Kelde. Uh, when Flint was getting raz and, but people know how to play the game, you can ask for an extension, so downtown, this particular person asked for an extension and paid a hundred dollars on the other property he owns, so now he has an extension for another year for both properties and. So, we're looking at other ways to go after Blight, um, I've I've asked Scott to help in that, um, I said, I don't care if you have to throw a raccoon in there yourself, say that there's raccoons in there, go after them on the animal side, and then I think there's a a roof collapsing, so we're gonna go after Blight on that side. And hopefully, I do have a few calls that people want that property, uh, they they don't know if they wanna lease it, uh, from the village or the DDA, the DDA is gonna discuss it probably Friday morning. I know that this particular person is in trouble with their mortgage company and the bank, and somebody offered him thirty-five thousand dollars within the last year and a half, and the bank laughed and said, that's not enough, so if the DDA wants to truly make downtown better, this is one option, and I think we have a dollar amount that we're gonna discuss. And see if we can get either the facade out, clean up that property, make a pocket park or a park, green space, which again leads to grants, and then clean up that, um, I don't wanna say the near the building, but, uh, the roof that's collapsing.
I think I got one other issue, I really tried bringing it up with you at the end of the last meeting, and I don't wanna get in a fight with you over it, I do believe we all need to stay on the same page, so we're all, whether we agree with each other or not, so we're all in contact, you need to start. Send whatever you sent one person, you sent it to all of us as far as the emails, I don't know why you're doing it, you obviously have my email, because after we got done here, you sent me an email and I got the email, so you have my email. You sent it to some but not to others, I don't know if it's a sway their vote or what's going on, don't smile because you're doing it, I know Dean W, you did it, you did it the day after, you, I set it up to you, you sent it to somebody else?
What Paul is talking about is a BCC, it's a blind carbon copy, so I sent it to myself and I BCC the board so that if they reply all, it doesn't go to them.
He's full of it, he's full of it, he's got my email, he never sent it to me, he sent it to somebody, this is for your eyes only, if you're not, are you hiding anything, Hartman?
Paul's pick, Paul's pick sixty-four, here's every email.
Are you hiding anything, Hartman? Yeah, and you know what, you can go right through my, I have nothing to hide, you can go on my phone and I'll, and you can you can.
We're all here, Paul.
Print anything off you want, I guarantee you never send it.
We're all here.
Tell me you didn't do it, are you trying to sway somebody's vote or something, is that why you're sending it to one and not all of us?
It's a BCC.
I'm telling you, you're not doing anything, you're not.
It's a BCC, it's a blind carbon copy.
I know exactly what's going on, you damn well sent it to me after the meeting the last time, and I'm not putting up with it.
I I I sent an email to you the day after you were elected at seven thirty AM.
The night I was here, you sent it to me, you haven't sent it to, to Ed or to Darcy, but you don't send it to me, you sent it to one, you're, we should all be on the same page.
I also have, I also have retention records for legal purposes, they are all here, the state can come in, the attorney general can come in, I've had my phone subpoenaed before.
Please do, please do.
I do have retention records.
Well, I'll tell you what, if if you're not hiding anything, you're not trying to sway anybody's votes, let's take that phone, you destroy the phone, we'll print it off, everything we did since November to every one of them, and we'll do it off ours, so that they all match up so that they're all good, that way you can prove that I'm wrong.
I I don't need to prove it, I know.
You don't need to prove it, you just should do.
No, no, I don't, I have all the.
You're lying in your DMW yard.
Here's every email you've ever sent you, Paul, every single one, going back to eleven nine twenty-two.
Let's go from November back, all the emails and texts you sent, every one of us, if you got enough to hide, and I'll say, I'll do the same, I'm sure if nobody has anything to hide on this side, we'll make sure it's been matched up.
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay, we have to make a motion to accept the department reports first.
I'll make a motion to accept the file, okay, accept the file.
And I'll support, you know, we have public comment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any public comment?
Yes.
Come on up, sir.
My name's Adrian Sturgini, and I'm on the planning commission, been teaching politics and economics and civics and government for twenty years in public schools. Mr. Nesbit, I appreciate your comment about how the planning commission has worked hard and that you, uh, take what we do and you trust us with that information, I appreciate that compliment. However, I would also advise you to make sure you take the time to look through this document because once this is all sent done, the ownership is gonna be on you guys, not the planning commission. But I also ask that you move on this and quit paving things till next month, next month, that you're prepared for meetings and ready to go on this stuff. Second of all, this was a poor, poor, disfluent example of democracy in the state tonight. What I didn't hear was discussion, I heard a lot of bickering, and when it came to voting for the chicken organs, I think many of us already had our minds made up, and you have every right to do that on the council. But I hope that you would take the time to discuss the matter rather than just vote on your feelings, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Saisik, come on up.
I was just, uh, I I read the citizen this week and, uh, my name's Phil Saisik, get out there, I was reading that, it said that Julie Church is still working for the village?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct, full-time officer.
So, she is still gonna continue to work?
Yes, sir.
Just not in a chief manner?
I believe, i- if I'm gonna be frank, I think it was the administrative side of the policing, she did not appro- didn't appreciate, she didn't like the time in the courts and the paperwork to file warrants, she likes being out with people and being on the road and being able to talk.
So, she's gonna continue to work?
Correct.
Good.
There's no perceived of.
There was a lot of misconceptions on Facebook, I saw several comments, Jim, yours especially, um, inaccurate, but it is part of it that, you know, bad gas travels fast, I get it.
That's good, thank you.
I got a comment real quick, nothing to do with chickens, so don't worry. It's kind of a semi bitch, but it's not, you, Don, we love you, I love the DPW, it's the way we do things. When we voted several years ago, I think it was four years ago, that we were gonna put money aside for the sidewalks to replace them a little bit each year, I thought, when I voted on that, was that we were gonna replace them to actual correct standards. To bring it up to new standards.
ADA compliant, you mean?
Well, no, it's just like on mine, and I'm just going on mine, mine had a four-inch lip that I've I've been complaining about it for fifteen, twenty years, I've been in the house for twenty-one years now, and they just kept coming back out, previous DPW, they'd come out and throw some tarbey on it, and I had over a five-inch lip. Well, I think it's a two-inch lip, it's OSHA, I think it is, says that that's a trip hazard for sidewalks, I think it's two inches, the one just down in front of Diane Hendrix, and it's now it's two, two and a half inches. Well, when Don came out, I talked to you on it, just real quick, and it's not, I'm Don, so I'm not, I don't wanna point at him, but the sidewalk, because it's so old and the water sits so bad, that sidewalk dips down and comes back up. So, I tried to get it fixed before I did my side, my driveway, uh, four years ago, five years ago, nobody would do it, I took pictures, all the water sitting and everything that heaved, so we had to match our driveway to the existing sidewalk. Now, he replaced two squares or three squares to the same level that the existing sidewalk is, if I stretch a string from one end down by Diane's to mine, there's a good nine-inch gap in water sits in front of my draw, in front of my sidewalk, going up to my porch, and it will be literally five inches deep. And it doesn't matter if it just trink- trickles, if ice melts, it doesn't matter, I will have a puddle, and you can go look at it right now, I showed Phil, it's mud, you can see the water lines like it's a flood zone on the river, there's high water lines on my sidewalk, so if we're gonna do it, we have to, I thought we were gonna replace the whole thing to make it look good. Redo it, form that sidewalk, raise it up to where it's supposed to be and make it a level sidewalk, now you look across my sidewalk down to Diane's where it's heaved, and you can see each of those old squares where it's matched up to are all heaving. They're all kitty wampus, so if we match, if we're only doing one or two squares, we're gonna have to match this one to those two in front and behind it, then the next one to those two, and you're gonna look like a roller coaster. And we still didn't replace Diane's heaving one that's from a city tree that we voted on, said if it's a village tree causing the heaving, we are, the village is relied on, they have to fix that. And so, we fixed two squares here to the level that's really bad and left the rest of the sidewalk just all kitty wampus and heaving, so if we're gonna do that, let's do it the way that we actually assumed that we were voting on, do the whole section, that's what, fifteen squares? I don't know what we can afford, and like I said, it's not, Don, he's doing what he thought was he was doing right based on what he was told to do, but we gotta do it all the way through, otherwise, you're just piecemeal and patch. Otherwise, you're just piecemeal and patchwork everywhere, and it's never, ever, ever going to look good. The other thing is the water out in front of my driveway, I had, when, uh, it was repaved, the road was resurfaced fifteen years ago, I told, uh, Hal, we gotta replace that curb because the water is gonna come right in, so we're not doing curbs. So everybody else around me, their curb is good, mine is completely gone, the water flows in, I took pictures, actually, for several years, they wouldn't let me say anything because I was on the council and it's conflict of interest. So finally, I got, uh, uh, Matt Lane to send out John from Spicer's, he came out, looked at it, we looked at the road, and it is high. You can see where that water flows down to the drain on Hosmer, and there is a, there is a definite defined line in the road, it'll go down and hit that and it squares right up to it, and then barely trickles, and then everything else flows back to my driveway, and now, since it's been so long, with all the heaving and fine, that road, that part of the road has dropped below my new driveway which was put in, matched the road four years ago. So everything is gonna crumble, it's just gonna get worse and worse, so we have to fix that, otherwise, I'm never gonna get out of the mud. I mean, I paved my driveway to get out of that mud hole that I had, and it's just gonna get, it's just gonna crumble again, an eleven thousand dollar driveway is gonna not be worth shit. So, all we have to do is go down by Hosmer in front of Diane's, grind that little bit of road, it's a section maybe two foot wide, five foot long, and the water will flow. John from Spicer came out, looked at it, says it's a simple fix, we just have to get him to do it. But I'm gonna have everything destroyed, I mean, I can't, my sidewalk is gonna be a roller coaster for the kids with little piece where, you know, a square here, a square there, all the water's gonna come back and flow into, into my house, and it's gonna destroy.
Drive by five, I'll look in the backyard, you wanna see a pond?
I know, I, I, but if we're gonna do it.
There'll be a place to drain.
We have to do it right, I like the fact that the DPW is doing it to save money, I like the idea of that, but if we're gonna do it, let's, let's do it right, let's not just do something just to.
Well, I can agree, I, I, I run these streets, these sidewalks every day.
Yeah.
They're bad.
Yeah.
All over.
Yeah, and I'm grateful mine was fixed, I mean, it's great.
I got wa, I got lakes in my frontage, my sidewalk floods every time it rains, my curb runoff is, it's gone, it's all, it's all over town.
And I'm not saying mine should be the one that's fixed next, I'm just saying.
I'd like to fix it all.
Let's just do that section, so at least we have one full section, not one brand new square, one full section, driveway to road, road to, road to road, you know, whatever, that's new. That looks better, it looks great, and I don't know what the cost is, I, I'm, I'm, I know.
We did fourteen thousand dollars worth of new sidewalks in twenty twenty-one, do you know how many, what the dollar amount of sidewalks will be doing this year?
A lot.
Could, could I give you a rough estimate, rough estimate?
I think it's at least forty or fifty thousand, I think.
I mean, it's on the, it's in the.
And the thing that, as a board to read the sidewalk ordinance, and Jim, you know what?
Yeah.
The, actually, the property owners own the sidewalks, the village does not, and Jim is correct, the only time the village will fix a sidewalk is a tree on the right way caused the damage.
A village tree caused the damage.
On the right way.
Yes.
Cause the damage, and you're correct on that, if you got a bad sidewalk, it's actually the property owner's responsibility to fix it.
Uh, except for?
The tree.
Well, except for that money that we allotted to repair sidewalks year by year.
That was like a five thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, it's not a lot, not a lot.
If somebody wanted to go half and half or something like that.
And, and that was the partnership they made with that person, right? Other, on top of that, there's act fifty-one money where we're required to spend a minimum of, I think, five thousand dollars per year on sidewalks to make sure that we're in compliance with the state, so.
So can we, can we do something then?
Well, the, the thing is too is, the ordinance, I think any tree that's planted on the right way, we, we're supposed to have a permit, and nobody ever does, cause nobody thinks about it. Somebody plots a tree, a little tree, and two foot away from the sidewalk today, twenty years down the road, it's, Jim's got another little.
Look at my maples.
He, he probably never planted it, but right next door to that one, there's one that's big, that's gonna shove this.
We're gonna do eighty-four thousand dollars worth of new sidewalks this year.
Yeah, I know, and, and that, and.
And so we'll do those right, and we'll keep on those right.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, when we do them, we should look at that whole section, kinda look at, otherwise, we're just replacing it.
Right.
To where it is now, we should replace it where it should be.
I agree.
Yeah.
So that's one of them we're gonna work on then?
It's not as part of phase one.
Well, yeah, it may fall somewhat within the influence, maybe, I'm not sure.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Can you get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.